Not working. There it goes.
Okay. Now, it's fifteen seconds past six o'clock. And we'll call the Tuesday, September thirteenth, Alexander County Schools Board of Education meeting to order. And I'll recognize Board Member Bridget Ryan to lead us in our pledge, please.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. At this time, if I could get a motion regarding approval of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ryan, second by Board Member Lautermeat. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. This time, we will enter into pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 115(c) dash five-one, our public comment period. And I'll recognize Mr. Latchford to speak with us, a poem about the United States. Mr. Latchford, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Latchford. I reside at Havenhurst Road in Bethlehem. I have three children enrolled in Alexander County Schools. My daughter is in eighth grade at West Alexander. I have two sons that are juniors and seniors at Alexander Central High School. Tonight, I'm going to read a spoken word poem to the board. This poem was written by Marcus Amaker, who was named a poet laureate of Charleston, South Carolina. It is entitled, "The United States of Anxiety." Welcome to the United States of Addiction. In this country, your smartphone holds more meaningful moments than your memory. Here, social media is social justice, and history is a hashtag for broken screens to get their fix. Here, fame doesn't lead to fortune, just first-world problems. Echo chambers for people at war with themselves. In the United States of Addiction, the Declaration of Independence isn't for independent people, the quiet-minded who mind their own business. In this country, you can be an activist by just being active on your phone, retweeting revolutionary wars, thumbprints of repetition, standing up for something without getting up from your couch, self-indulgent shouts with a global view, but boomerangs of wisdom from a bedroom in your house. This is a patriotic poem. Welcome to the United States of Anxiety. In this country, society tells us our credit should be straight while selling us the crooked path of commercialism. Here, citizens take CBD oil between awkward conversation and the constant chatter of the mind. Boredom is not an option. Silence is not sustainable. In the United States of Anxiety, Instagram spoons with insomnia. We swipe up and get out of bed, wide awake with sleepy minds, then daydream of FOMO and flat screens, the American dream. This is a patriotic poem. Welcome to the United States of Assumptions. In this country, the color of your skin allows automatic privilege. Land, money, power, health, monuments, legacy, generational wealth. Here, anything unfamiliar is dangerous. Anyone who disagrees with you is the devil. In the United States of Assumptions, any poet who speaks about injustice is an Obama-loving, hip-hop bumping, tree hugging, emotional heartbeat pumping soul of a man. On the surface, that may be true about me, but there's many more layers for you to see. Welcome to the United States of Aggression. In this country, we freely walk over broken bones in the basement of buildings built by the kidnapped and enslaved. Here, we walk on beautiful landscapes and dance on graves. Welcome to America, a walking contradiction. This is a patriotic poem. The poem I just read was the very first reading assignment this year for junior high English classes at ACHS. I know this because my son is in one of those classes. After reading, the students were asked to answer specific questions regarding portions of the poem. I appreciate having been given the opportunity to share this poem with you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we have the consent agenda. If I could get a motion regarding the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Board Member Bowman, second by Board Member Schrum. New discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, we'll recognize Janelle Lingle, the principal of Tailsville Elementary, for the Tailsville Elementary report.
Good evening Chairman Odom and members of the board, Dr. Hefner. I'm looking forward to updating you tonight as to how the start of the year for Tailsville Elementary has been this year. I'm not sure how I got voted to be leadoff hitter this year, but I'm thankful that I get to stand in front of you tonight. Our first slide here is just some of the things that you've heard about Tailsville over the last seven years that I've been there, just about being above the line and kind of the mantra that we have at our school for continuous improvement. Next slide, please. What you're looking at here is the staff of Tailsville for this school year. We are fifty-two strong, serving two-hundred-and-thirty-eight students daily, sixteen of those being in our pre-K classroom. We have eighteen and a half certified staff, including twelve classroom teachers, two E.C., three and a half specials, one instructional coach, and then me as their principal. You're looking at one of the most dedicated groups of individuals and educators that I have ever had the privilege to work with. And it's my honor to get to lead them every day. A new staff member sent out an email on Friday, and I wanted to share a little bit of that with you. She is a veteran teacher with over fifteen years of experience. And she's just a look from an unbiased outside set of eyes to the culture of Tailsville. What she said to our staff was, "Each staff member is phenomenal at what they do. The amount of support you give each other and students is amazing. It would be apparent to anyone who comes through the door that student needs are top priority. Students here are more respectful and friendly than anywhere I have ever been." You know, sometimes when you're in it so deeply, you lose sight of the impact that you have. And that's what Tailsville Elementary School is. It's just what we do every single day. We care for kids, and we care for each other, and we care for this community, and anything else is unacceptable. So I'm very proud to stand with these ladies. And Mark Oden, the gentleman of the, he's the rooster of the group. So we're thankful for him. Our focus and priorities for this year, if it doesn't challenge you, it doesn't change you. And we've all been through a tremendous amount of challenge over the last couple of years. Over the years, you've seen me with this slide, our non-negotiables at Tailsville every year. And we update them and tweak them just a little bit every year. But we have three main goals that we're working on this year. And the main one is just, we are going to move forward. It is time for our students to move forward. And this year, more than any in the last couple, our students have come to the table ready. We spent a lot of time last year filling holes. And, you know, we've used the Swiss cheese analogy before, where we've got to fill in all these holes before we can move forward together as a unit. We feel like that we filled the majority of those, and we're ready. So how do we do that? We're going to be intentional with our instruction. We're going to use consistent and best practices that provide explicit and repetitive instruction for students. You've heard me say that before, intentional, explicit, and repetitive. That's what we do over and over and over. And then finally, we're going to move children to independence. We're going to remove that scaffolding that so many of us become dependent on to help get through those hard problems. And we do that with love and with care, but with consistency. And we put it back when we need to, but then we take it away from them when they're ready. And most of our kids are definitely ready. Next slide, please. These are our scores over the last seven years, seven to eight years. And, you know, COVID disrupted everything, everything in our lives. And we're moving this mountain of COVID out of the way once in a time together as a school system and as a representative of that system at our school. We all felt it. Tailsville, we are rebuilding. We're making progress, and I'm extremely proud of the staff and even more of the students. We did push above seventy percent proficient in math and above sixty percent proficient in reading last year. And so, you know, compared to just a few years ago when we were at fifty-four and fifty-seven, I'm very, very proud of the level of consistency that our students and staff have been able to achieve over the last several years. We're not where we want to be, but we have a solid plan on how to get there, and we're coming. So just watch us. Don Dallas, Tailsville Elementary is coming, and you're going to be very proud of us hopefully at the end of this year. How are we going to do that? Next slide. What's our plan? We're going to have active and accountable teachers and staff leadership. Everybody plays a role, from the first student that gets into the building to me when I'm the last one to leave at night. Every person has a role. Our PLCs, our sit team, our leadership, our MTSS process, it all works together to create that whole child that's ready for the next level. We're going to use our data to drive our instruction and make that intentional and explicit, targeted to what our kids need. And finally, those best practices are based on data and the learning-focused strategies and the things that we're doing as a unit in Alexander County through letters and learning-focused strategies that we've been working on for several years, and also the TES way. And our way may not work at other schools, and I don't want it to. It works for our kids and what our kids need right now. And so, if I have done my job, then when they go to East Middle, they're ready for that next level. And so, together, those three things, and our coach, Kelly Tease, and the staff, they just continue to amaze me every single day. So we're very excited about what's going to happen. Our community partners. Y'all may have seen the flamingos flying around the last couple of weeks. Those birds raised over $2,000, hopping around different places in this county to supply the needs of our children through First United Methodist Church and other community partners that we have. You know, I always worry, but then, I don't know why, because it always happens. And I'm so thankful for this community just because of, that's the Alexander County way. And they step up, and not just Tailsville, but if any child needs anything in this system, that need is met, and I feel very confident in that. But we are very thankful for the YMCA and Tailsville Savings Bank and First United Methodist for helping us get the year started off correctly and with a very positive start. Our kids' energy in the building is incredible. And also our parents. I want to give a shout out to them because I pushed a little more on them this year as far as expectations for school supplies, where they haven't had that in the past four to five years. And they stepped up and brought more than what was expected. And that really helped shoulder that burden for something that can't. So that's what our, our parents care for each other. And finally, what you're looking at before I entertain any questions. Dr. Hefner, at the opening session, threw a challenge out to Alexander County Schools employees about each month doing some staff wellness. And so, one of our goals on our school improvement plan and strategic plan is community and family engagement and involvement. And so, we're going to kind of pass that on down and do something every month with Tailsville families to try to keep them engaged with our school now that things have opened back up and get them involved. And this is one of the things that's going on right now. At our open house, we handed out sidewalk chalk, and we encouraged parents and children to go back and at their home, create a picture and then send it in to us. And there's Facebook voting right now this week. And the one that has the most likes, the one in the bottom there, Keyan, he's a kindergartner. His kind of waterfall over the side of the sidewalk. I thought that was pretty cool for him. But, you know, it's just a way to get people looking at Tailsville and engaged in what we're doing. And so, this is just one of many. We had Family Night Tonight at Wendy's until eight o'clock, and the building was packed and cars lined up around the parking lot. So, you know, that's just a way for us to get together and speak about the good things that are happening in our community. So we are doing this art project. We're going to do some exercise things together as families this year, maybe cook a meal together, just some different things as the year goes along to keep us engaged and hopefully talk to each other about school. Can I answer any questions for you?
First of all, I went to Wendy's to support you tonight, but I had to put mortar in because it was backed up so many people. So I did put mortar in. Secondly, you know, you do have a lot of good things going. And, you know, we've heard a lot about recruitment and retention lately. Teachers leaving and stuff like that. We do have teacher working conditions out recently. And as I was looking through that and some of the stuff you had, one of the things, and you're the first elementary principal up here, so you're on the spot for this one if you can help us here. One of the things, you know, you hear a lot from teachers is the, especially elementary, they lack the planning time, the collaborative planning time. Non-instructional time sometimes not sufficient. With your grade-level meetings and stuff like that, without burdening teachers after school hours, do you have any thoughts, plans, how you maybe could address that in your building?
Well, the way we address it currently is we have at least once a week, our teachers have a forty-minute planning every day. That's during their specials time that the students rotate out. And then, once a week, they have an eighty-minute, they have back-to-back specials where our specials teacher takes on the extra load and keeps those kids for an extra rotation to allow an eighty-minute planning with Kelly, specifically for data dives and things like that. So that's how we handle it. At Tailsville, it's been very successful so far. And, you know, we would love to, this is the first year in about three years that I've had volunteers wanting to come in the building. And so, as long as, and I'm able to use some Title I funds to hire some additional personnel and also through those positions that Dr. Curry has put out for us, I've got all of those filled. And so, we're going to have some extra bodies in the classroom so that will hopefully create up some time for teachers.
And, you know, that's something we hear. It's not just, I mean, I don't hear it just Tailsville, but, you know, when you want to give them a good working environment, you know, that's something we constantly hear from elementary. And I think everybody up here can say that they've probably heard it for years.
Yep.
So that's why I was curious how you was handling that, since you are the first elementary person, because that was something jumped out at me when I was looking through some of it.
Absolutely. You know, and I was, I knew you'd ask something about teacher working. One of the things on Tailsville that I was very proud of is that one of the questions was, "Do you feel like this school is a good place to work?" And we got a lot of that, and so I'm very proud of that. Now, is there work to do? Yes, of course, there's always things that need to be worked on. But we are working very hard as a sit team to have that distributed leadership and to let those teachers have that voice and their parents at the table when these decisions are being made on how we spend this funding that we have.
I have a question. Will your reading program, and for example, when Officer Knight would come in and read to the kids, will that be, will that be going on?
The reading partners, yes. We are currently in the process of redeveloping our Lunch Buddy program as well as our Reading Partners program. And I would love to get the partnership back now that we're a little more open with the high school where the football team came over and read with us. And I'd love to get multiple. I've already had a inquiry from Alexander Early College with their Beta and Interact Club. So yes, that's definitely going to happen. I'm excited about it.
So, parents play a pivotal role in their child's education. And I noticed you had Family Night at Wendy's, but coming away back from COVID now and trying to kind of rebuild those relationships, do you have a plan? It's kind of like with, I plan on asking as many principals as we can. Do you have a plan in place? Or you guys talked about it as a school, of how you can get more parental involvement back in the school? You know, I remember several years ago, you know, they would have a hot dog. You know, parents could come and eat hot dogs and see their teachers on, you know, open house or something. But is there something planned in place for, because you're centralized, and you've got a lot of parents potentially that could really walk to school. So have you thought about that at all?
Yes, we have. We will have two parent family nights, one in the fall, one in the spring, per our Title I requirements for math and reading. But one of the things that became very visible throughout our last parent survey that we did was they want the time to come in and meet with the teachers and just get some one-on-one or one-on-three or four conversation with them about how to help them. You know, parents want to help their children, but we don't teach the way that we learned anymore. And so, it's hard to do the math. It's hard to do the reading like we instruct them. And so, they want that one-on-one. Another idea that we've had is when we do parent conferences, to spread that over two weeks so that we can do a K-2 and then a 3-5 so that we can have more time to meet individually with those parents. And then, opening the doors for assistance, like we've had different times here, especially at the beginning of the year, to like help with the online registration. You know, I was so proud Tailsville was 100% online registered, and I didn't think that that would happen, but we are. And so, you know, it's just a matter of learning that process, and now, next year won't be scary. So, yeah, we definitely have some things in the works. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Lingle? Thank you very much.
Hey, I didn't cry for the first time. Thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Yeah, did good. Okay. At this time, we'll recognize Ms. Kathy Cottle, our school nutrition director, for an update regarding the summer meal program.
Thank you Chairman Odom, Dr. Hefner, board members. We have worked continuously for a long time with basically the week of the July 4th being our only break. And we have, I've tallied up the number of meals served during the summer feeding. In June, we had eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-four breakfasts, sixteen thousand, I mean, eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight lunches, July, seventy-four thirty-nine breakfasts and sixty-eight forty-nine lunches. And August, seventy-eight thirty-five breakfasts and seventy-six oh seven lunches, for a total of twenty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-eight breakfasts and twenty-six thousand one hundred and fifty-four lunches. That is huge for a county as small as ours. If a child didn't get to eat, and that should say August on that bottom part instead of July, that second July. If they didn't eat, it was not our fault. We tried to feed everybody. So I feel like it was a real success. In addition, we have had, I think the biggest thing with the COVID and the waivers that allow parents to pick up meals is they actually got to see what the kids are eating. And they know it's not just a heated-up hamburger or a hot dog. We're cooking food. We're finally in a position financially that we can, because of our commodity usage, that we can afford some equipment. In the past, it's been patchit until you couldn't find parts to patchit anymore. So we are starting to replace equipment and get everything that the school cafeteria is made. We have had the most people apply for free and reduced lunches that we've ever had that I could find in history of Alexander County. The numbers are a little skewed because always at the first of the year, there'll be kids who were actually withdrawn, who are showing up in the school. We're trying, so Anita Jenkins and I are working through that. But right now, we're over forty-two percent approved for free and reduced meals. That's huge. There are three schools right now, that may change, like four schools right now, that are over fifty percent. That's never been the case before. So, once we get the final numbers, if you would like, I'll send Dr. Hefner a copy of the demographics report that shows the number applied and the number that have received reduced and free, and then the ones that have been denied because they were over the income level. But it's been tremendous this year. So I have personally approved every one of those applications, and it's over two thousand, two thousand two hundred and seventy-six right now is what our final number is. So that's pretty much the state of affairs with child nutrition. Do y'all have any questions?
Can you talk a little bit about the year coming up? I'm just curious if they're still, are we able to still do something on weekends and school breaks like you used to do?
No, that was a waiver for extended period of time, but they renewed it in July. We didn't know that they were going to because it was supposed to end the end of June. But as soon as they approved the waiver to end through the summer, but as soon as schools started, that ended. So that's over, but...
Would you explain a little bit about the commodities and the savings and why you're able to?
Well, basically, in the last year and a half, I have been able to acquire commodities or the food that USDA buys and agrees to pay farmers or whatever to produce. And we have an allocation based on the number of lunches from the year before. And that's how our allocation is. Where I might have $123,000 in the year before, I was able to get, in addition to that, over $600,000 in bonus commodities. So that is basically where we are. Before coming to Alexander County, I couldn't find any bonus commodities that had been utilized. So they call me the commodity queen. Department of Agriculture calls me when they find something and says, "Could you use?" And I say, "Of course I can." Of course I can use it. We will make a recipe for it. So we are utilizing everything we can get. And I think our meals, we're still doing like three different choices each day. We're not using as many salads right now because we've got so many other commodities.
And we did not have to increase prices?
We kept our prices down. Hopefully, we can maintain that. We're still living on our commodities. Last year, I've been able to acquire a few this year, but I don't know if they're going to be as bountiful as they were. We got word early in the, right after the first of the year, school year, that nobody bid on fruit being processed, canned fruits. Nobody, no company did. But somewhere, they found some pears, and we were all over them.
So nobody bid on the fruit contract?
To USDA. We have frozen ones, but nobody bid for the canned ones. And I think part of that is the, you know, the supply issues. And we're looking at more increases because they're talking about the railroads going on strike. That's, you know, we've gotten a lot where truckers were interrupted. Now, freight is going to be interrupted. So, thank goodness, we have our commodities. That's gotten us through. When other people were limited, some school systems had one item they put on the menu. Some were not able to get a real, whole, reimbursable meal. But we always had at least two choices for our children. School meals, lunches, $2.85 and $1.45 for breakfast. Of course, this year, the state has been, for several years, paying the reduced children's breakfast thirty cents is all they, but the state paid for that. And the reduced kids' lunches, this year, they voted to do that in the budget for the state. So if a child is receiving reduced meals, they get breakfast and lunch free. As I've printed off notification letters, I've put that on the letter and I've highlighted it, I think, on every letter so they wouldn't miss that and misunderstand that they don't have to pay.
Ms. Cottle, I just want to thank you and all your staff because you've worked hard and fed a lot of kids and a lot of families. So we thank you for that.
My staff has been wonderful. We'd love for you to come eat now, but...
Well, we would love to come in.
I'm going to wait till they have pears, and I'll be there.
I have pears today.
At this time, we'll recognize Ms. Jessica Anderson, our executive director of Exceptional Children's Program and Student Support Services. And she will go over some goals for the new year.
Thank you. Good evening. So I have the goals proposed from the School Health Advisory Council team. Some of them are pretty familiar. They felt that there could be more in-depth work done on them. Some of them are new, so I'm going to propose them to you. They are to provide information annually to students on the risks of social media, increase student and parent awareness and parent awareness on accessing bullying reporting and supportive resources, develop a process of resources to address the locations that show high incidences of bullying. Let me give you a little more background on this one. The teams looked at some bullying reports from the schools, incident reports giving where things occurred, the type of things, and things kind of bubbled to the top. And you could see there was social media, it was a high one. There was activity of bullying that occurred on the bus more than other locations. So this one was, makes some materials, content, resources specific to the locations that these things are occurring. The offer onsite fitness activities for staff, obviously not during school, but after school or before school. Things like walking club were mentioned. And then wellness opportunities that are offered during professional development days also.
Any questions, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you. So these will come back next month, but they will be in an update of policy 6140, which is the School Health Advisory Policy. Just want to share those ahead of time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't realize you were under the weather there.
That's new.
Yeah, just to.
That's new.
I thought I needed a proper.
Hang in there. Okay. Ms. Robinette, Andrea Robinette, Chief Director of Accountability and Federal Programs.
Okay, so I'm here to present the final portion of Dr. Curry's presentation that she shared with you last month, the comprehensive needs assessment. Since then, the data from, the testing data from the 2021, 2022 school year has been released and approved by the State Board. So that's what I'm gonna update you on tonight. 58% of our test takers were proficient. That is up from the 2020, 2021 of 45% proficiency. And 59% was our proficiency rate pre-pandemic, which was 2018, 2019. So we're almost right back up to where we were before the pandemic as far as proficiency goes. Overall, we saw increase in math scores more than we did in reading scores, but we also saw significant gains in science for grades five and eight. At the high school level for end-of-course exams, Math 1, Math 3, English 2, and Biology, proficiency in all of those subjects improved and is higher than it was pre-pandemic, the 2018, 2019 school year. At the state level for the 2021, 2022 school year, 864 schools have been identified as low performing. That is up from 488 in 2018 and 19. And the number of low performing districts has increased from eight in 2018, 19, to 29 in 2020, 2021, 2022. On this slide, you see school performance grades by school type, elementary, middle, and high school, and the letter grades for each of those different school types. And then on the right, that is the report card grade or the school letter grade for each of our schools. It's important to keep in mind that 80% of the report card grade comes from proficiency and 20% of the report card grade comes from growth. This slide shows growth for our secondary schools, for our middle schools, and our high school. In our high schools, you'll see, the second column is overall growth for the whole school. And you'll see three of our four schools here exceeded growth. And then the columns out to the right shows the various subgroups and how each school performed growth-wise for the different subgroups. You'll see reading and math reported for the middle schools. Those are EOG designations. That's why they're not up at the top with the high schools. The high school's EOC growth data will be reported as diagnostic data from EVOS later in October. This next slide shows growth for our elementary schools, three of our elementary schools, and these are just in alphabetical order. And you see like with the first one there, Bethlehem, in order to meet growth, you need a growth index score of negative two to positive two. So Bethlehem overall just met, just missed meeting growth by 5/100ths of a point. But if you look out at their subgroups and then their reading and math, you can see that they met several of those subgroups and then they actually met in reading and in math. They have a smaller standard error because they have a larger set of data because they are one of the bigger elementary schools. So there's not as much wiggle room with the analysis of the data. And they have more accurate with the negative 2.05 and the 5/100ths off from their growth. This is, next slide, shows the other four elementary schools and how they performed growth-wise overall, and then their subgroups, and then reading and in math. Keep in mind that all students are expected to make growth regardless of proficiency, and proficiency is not correlated with growth. Proficiency is whether or not the students pass the test. But all students are expected to make growth, and growth is calculated by EVOS based on how students across the state who are academically similar to our students performed, or academically similar in the subgroups. This slide shows proficiency, which is a little bit easier to understand, that our students pass the test. This slide shows overall proficiency for grades three through eight. And you can see this is Alexander County schools compared to North Carolina. And you can see that we are above the state average with proficiency on our EOGs at all Next slide shows the same data, EOG proficiency data, Alexander County schools compared to North Carolina. But this, this slide shows reading data specifically for grades three through eight, EOGs, Alexander County schools compared to North Carolina. And then the next slide shows proficiency, Alexander County schools, EOGs, grades three through eight. This time, it's math. And then this is our final proficiency slide, where we see science at grades five and eight, Alexander County schools compared to North Carolina. And then we have the high school EOC courses, Math 1, Math 3, Biology, and English 2, and how Alexander County schools compares to North Carolina in proficiency. Federal and state designations are issued based on our growth and accountability data. And so you can see those designations for our schools on this slide. You can see that we have three low performing schools. That's the state designation. A low performing school is a school that has a D or an F on their report card grade and also did not make growth. We also have three schools that have a federal designation of TSI. That stands for targeted support and improvement. It means that one of the subgroups did not make growth. Specifically with these three schools, you can see the subgroup that's listed there that needs additional targeted support. It's SWD, which stands for Students with Disabilities. Students that, or schools that have a federal or state designation, receive additional support through the school improvement process. They use the school improvement process to allocate resources towards meeting the needs of those students who did not make growth. Specifically with these, that would be students with disability. And then the final slide shows how we compared, we, Alexander County schools, compared to districts in our surrounding counties. So you can see from this slide that we did quite well compared to other districts in neighboring counties. We are currently, as I stated initially, at 58% proficient. And pre-pandemic, we were at 59% proficient. So we're not quite where we were, but our students are continuing to improve. And I think it's important to note that, you know, last year, even though we might think we were out of the pandemic or people say we were or whatever, it was arguably not a normal year last year. We had, students were still under quarantine, teachers were under quarantine. We had lots of, we will still see the impacts of that. And we obviously did in our data. But we are making progress. Our students are making progress and we are continuing to improve. Are there any questions?
Can you flesh out the term, sorry, students with disabilities? Because my mind goes to a definition, but I don't know the definition.
Those are our students who receive Exceptional Children's Services. They have been identified with a disability and they receive support from our Exceptional Children's Program.
Would speech be included in that?
Yes, it would.
And we do have a large number of students in speech.
Any other questions for Ms. Robinette?
You mentioned her report card was 80% proficiency, 20% growth, correct?
That's correct.
And that changed this cycle, correct? Am I, am I right? No, no, it didn't change. I want to be clear on that.
It's up for discussion.
Okay.
That there is a new accountability model that is up for discussion. I do not know all the details of that.
So it has been 80/20?
This is still 80/20.
Thank you for your report.
Great job.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll recognize Mr. Chris Campbell, our maintenance director, and he's gonna give us an update regarding a grant application.
So that's blurry to me. So this year with the North Carolina Public School Capital Fund Grant Opportunities, we re-applied for the Sugarloaf Grant for the new GM, new office area. That was submitted and back into running. And then ACHS, Taylorsville, and West Alexander Middle School are all complete H-back replacements for aging systems that we applied for. The other slide that's on here, the other, when I have, as I emailed the person in charge of the grants to ask when we would hear from that, and his, you don't have to put it up, I can tell. He, he said that we should hear by the end of this month, hopefully sooner, but at least by the end of this month is their estimated time.
Any questions, Mr. Campbell, regarding $12.7 million worth of grant applications that have been made for our respective school?
And you can read in the email response back to Mr. Campbell that there were over 160 applications statewide.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Appreciate that. This time, I'll recognize Dr. Heffner for our strategic plan review, 23 through 25.
Thank you Chairman Odom. When the board packet went out last week, I think that you would quickly be aware that this strategic plan does not look like the beautiful plan that we have on the website. As I explained, this is still in draft form, and it will be made to look a lot more appealing when we put it in the format with pictures and different things. But the basic idea that I wanted you to, or the, the basic understanding that I wanted you to gain from this is that the strategic plan, this is new, it will run from the 22, 23 school year to the 24, 25 school year. So it's a three-year plan as the strategic plan has been. You see on the first page that we have beliefs and values, the vision statement, mission statement, and motto. Those had very few changes, just a little bit of word smithing. What you will see in the plan is that we have reduced our previous plan from seven priorities to four. And the reason for that is because this aligns with the state priorities. And we just thought that it would be easier to understand, but other things are exactly the same. Under each of the four priorities, you will see goals, you will see objectives, and then you will see action steps. We were very conscious this round in making sure that these goals, objectives, and action steps are measurable. Dr. Curry, she talks a lot about SMART goals, and one of the components in the SMART goal is that it has to be measurable so that we can come back to you all at the end of each year and tell you how successful we have been as far as meeting these goals and objectives. So certainly, this was for your information this month. I would encourage you to read through it. If you have suggestions or if you think we have missed something in the four priorities, I would welcome your feedback. We will have this back in front of you at the October meeting, and at that point, it will be for board approval. So do you have any questions about the new strategic plan? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heffner.
Thank you.
Do any of our respective committee chairs have reports from any of the various committees? Okay. This time, we'll recognize Dr. Heffner for our superintendent's report.
Thank you again Chairman Odom. This is attached in the agenda. I just want to start by offering a big congratulations, Ms. Lingel. If you will, tell Michelle Robinson that I gave her a big shout out. Michelle is an elementary teacher at Taylorsville, and she was notified on September 1st that she has been awarded $15,000. It's a grant from the Outdoor Heritage North Carolina Advisory Council. And the purpose of the grant money will be to construct an outdoor classroom. That has been a dream of hers at Taylorsville. Both she and Mrs. Lingel, they are super excited about that news. And I would just ask you to join me in congratulating Michelle Robinson. Also, yesterday was the 10th day of school, and I forwarded you the number of children that we have enrolled. That total was 4,425 students in grades K through 12. It does not include our preschool students. As you well know, funds for this school year was based on a projected enrollment of 4,497 students. So that difference is less than 100, and that's wonderful news. If it continues up until the 20th day, we will not have to revert money back to the state. So that's wonderful news. Bullet number three, I have changed our November board meeting date to November 1st due to the local elections being held on the original meeting date of November 8. I shared this information with you through email earlier, and I have attached a new meeting schedule into tonight's agenda. Bullet number four, at this time, we have one board member registered to attend the North Carolina School Board Association Law Conference in Asheville. If you want to attend, I need to know tonight. In order to get you registered, I was informed that they don't have any more rooms available at the conference site, but we will certainly get a room for you in a nearby hotel. The deadline for registration is Friday. Bullet number five, I also informed you on Friday in my weekly update that Sheriff Chris Bowman and I plan to present a request for additional resource officers to the county commissioners during their scheduled meeting on Monday, September 19. The meeting starts at 6:00. I'm going to explain the safety grant that we applied for in August, and Sheriff Bowman will reiterate that if the grant is awarded, it will help offset the cost of hiring additional officers. But due to the constraints of the grant funding, local funding also will be required to fully equip these new officers and to place them into service at the elementary school campuses. If you would like to support our request to the commissioners, please make plans to attend the meeting on Monday. And then the final bullet, I found out today that the Health Department will be providing flu vaccines to staff again this year. The tentative day for the central office will be the afternoon of October 25. Because you are considered school system employees, you are eligible to get that free vaccine. You just need to let Donna Mayberry, our lead nurse, know that you do want to come to the central office and get a flu vaccine that day. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heffner. This time, I'll recognize our chief financial officer, Ms. Mahaffey, regarding proposed BOE policy revisions.
We have four policies up for revision, immunization and health requirements for school admission, school sex, student sex offenders, use of unmanned aircraft, and advertising in the school. We'll get input and bring those back for second reading next month.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey. A resolution of the Alexander A resolution of the Alexander County Board of Education urging support and funding for the child nutrition and the school meals program, Dr. Jennifer Heffner.
Thank you, Chairman Odom. This, I want to reiterate that this resolution originated in Moore County. And it has been endorsed by the North Carolina School Board Association. It reads, excuse me, Resolution of the Alexander County Board of Education urging support and funding for child nutrition and the school meals program. Whereas, one of the most important functions provided by public education is to offer all students healthy and appropriate nutrition during the day, excuse me, during the school day. And whereas, in the discharge of that responsibility, Alexander County Schools, together with other school systems, provide a nutritious breakfast and lunch through a program supported by the United States Department of Agriculture. And whereas, this program exists because there also exists a national consensus that students who lack appropriate nutrition do not do well in their studies and suffer irreparable harm both during their school years and later in life. And whereas, traditionally, students experiencing poverty or whose family income is close to the poverty line have been provided free breakfast and lunches, while other students whose families are still struggling were receiving partially discounted meals. Yet many middle-class and working-class people who do not qualify for these benefits traditionally had to pay the full price for school meals. And whereas, because of the cost, many families did not participate. And whereas, for the past two years, the federal government issued a waiver suspending means testing and giving all students healthy and nutritious meals at no cost to their families. And whereas, based on that waiver, many more families participated and many more children were fed nutritious, well-balanced meals. And whereas, Congress eliminated this waiver for this upcoming two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which will result in many of our students not being properly fed during the school day. And whereas, prior to the waiver, the United States economy was strong. Inflation hovered between one and two percent. Wages were rise, wages were rising relative to inflation. And the price of gasoline to go to and from work and school was much lower than the current price. And whereas, today, inflation is about nine percent per year. Wages are dropping relative to inflation. Gasoline prices remain high. And the cost of housing, food, and energy continue to rise. And whereas, many middle-class working families, especially those with school-aged children, although not experiencing poverty, are nonetheless making difficult decisions about whether they can afford breakfast, lunch, or any school meals at all. And whereas, many of our families are too proud and self-reliant to seek government assistance. And whereas, the inevitable result will be that many students who need our nutrition services will be denied those services. Their diets will suffer, as will their education. And whereas, without the reinstatement of the means test waiver, families who received free nutrition services will be forced to pay approximately four dollars and fifty cents per day, per child, for school meals. This failure to reinstate the waiver means that typical middle-class family with two children will pay about two hundred per month over and above what they paid last year in order to feed their children at school. This also means that these families must budget an added two thousand dollars per year to provide basic child nutrition. And whereas, many families may have to choose between feeding their children at school and heating their homes. This added cost is greater than many utility bills and rivals the cost of gasoline to drive between home and work. And whereas, while Congress may deem it appropriate to spend hundreds of billions of dollars on what it calls the Inflation Reduction Act or spend many more billions on the production of semiconductors or the war in Ukraine, none of these are more pressing than feeding American schoolchildren. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Education respectfully request that the President of the United States, the Speaker of the U.S. House of Representatives, the Senate Majority Leader, and our North Carolina Members of Congress take immediate action to reinstate the waiver of means testing for all school meal programs for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And that the Alexander County Board of Education respectfully request that the Speaker of the North Carolina House of Representatives, the Lieutenant Governor, and the President Pro Tem of the North Carolina Senate and/or Governor of the State of North Carolina call a special session of the North Carolina General Assembly for the purpose of appropriating sufficient funds from the state's budget surplus to reimburse public schools for the cost of providing nutritious breakfast and lunches for all students, regardless of income, to remain in effect during this fiscal year, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget biennium, until or unless the U.S. Congress reinstates the school nutrition means test waiver. And that the superintendent is directed to send this resolution to our North Carolina state-elected officials, our locally-elected state representatives, and state legislative leaders, including but not limited to the Governor and Lieutenant Governor, the Speaker of the North Carolina House of Representatives, the President Pro Tem of the North Carolina Senate, and to federal officials, including but not limited to the President of the United States, the Speaker and Minority Leader of the U.S. House of Representatives, the U.S. Senate Majority and Minority Leaders, our North Carolina Congressional Delegation, and the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture. And that this resolution shall be widely distributed by our Alexander County Schools Communication Department to the press, public, and all school systems within North Carolina, including a request for the support of all Boards of Education throughout the state. Adopted by Alexander County Board of Education, Alexander County, North Carolina, this thirteenth day of September, two thousand twenty-two.
Very good. Fellow board members, you have a resolution before you stating what has just been mentioned. I want to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Schrum.
Second.
Second, by Board Member Cooksey. Any further discussion? I don't know if I have the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Resolution carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll recognize Facilities Committee Chair, Mr. Scott Bowman. And he'll give us a, an update on what we refer to as the anticipated third phase at Sugarloaf Elementary.
Thank you, Chairman Odom. Board members, in your package, you see updates as far as what we have as far as some drawings of the new gym at Sugarloaf. You also see lottery monies and our monies available in that. We can probably pull up, if, Alicia can pull up, there we go. We've got a couple of just rough drawings of Sugarloaf as far as a gym location and what would be added up there as far as potentially taking the old gym and turn it into a media center, putting the new gym in that location where the media center is now, adding some offices, a little better security with that and tying all that together. So that is not a blueprint, but it is just some rough drawings that we have. So in a moment, we'll talk more. I'll answer any question anybody has. But you do have our lottery monies before you and know about what we have for projects. Now, this totally is not our only project. And we will have to discuss that at a later time. But Sugarloaf is a, a big deal. We've talked about it a long time. I, for one, will do my best to figure out a way to make this happen. I think all the facility has agreed on that. I would like to, if the board will allow me, a couple of suggestions. Number one, I think we definitely need a work session for all of us. Some of us has not been able to meet and know a lot about this project. And I think it's only fair to get a work session in, in the next couple of weeks or by the next board meeting, we're all on the same page with that. So Dr. Heffner and myself has worked out three dates. If you guys will jot them down and maybe in closed session, give them a date, we'll agree on the time to do it. September twenty-ninth is a Thursday, Monday, October third, or Tuesday, October fourth. If you'll let me know later tonight, we will pin down a date. We'll announce, Deborah can announce that, and the public can attend if they want to. And we'll try to discuss Sugarloaf. We'll also try to figure out a few other things. If you remember Mr. Campbell's grant application, we've got needs at the high school with heating and cooling. We've got needs at West Alexander with heating and cooling. So we've got big-ticket items. And, you know, I pray that we get some grant money. That's not a guarantee. If we do, then that makes our life a lot easier. But we will have to wait on that. So if you will let us get a work session in, I think that will help. My last suggestion, and it's just a suggestion, the board can do what they want. Right now, them drawings is all we have. We need to decide with a recommendation, if the board wants to, to get some blueprints made of the Sugarloaf project. We really need blueprints before we can send out bids. So I'm suggesting that if the board would like to move forward with that, we will put some, put out to get blueprints made so we can, at some point, send out for bids. That's just a suggestion from me. Any board member that wants to recommend that or something else is more than welcome to do that. Does anybody have any questions for me as far as Sugarloaf?
I have a question for Dr. Heffner.
Yes. Yes.
In the initial drawing of this rough drawing, you did make some tweaks that you felt needed to be made. And you're, are you comfortable with this layout now?
Yes, and the tweaks, just upon the, the initial drawing, I just felt like there were still some safety concerns. Those offices in the front of the gymnasium area, that of course would be for the principal, receptionist, and people of that nature. And the original drawings had children going in the path of where people would go to enter into the school's office. And I did not think that that was safe. So when I, when I mentioned that to the architect, he did indeed tweak that.
And I like that better. I, I like that because the children are not in that line at all.
Children would go into the gymnasium. You see the hallway that separates the offices from the gym itself. That's where the children would enter into the gymnasium. Also, there is outdoor access for the rec department that would prevent them from going into other areas of the building on weekends and that sort of thing, so we don't set off security alarms and such. But yes, the, the suggestions that I made, they were indeed, it was revised.
Any other comments from the board regarding this?
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, if I may. I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with a sealed set of blueprints. And I know we have to go through straight approval on that. And I'm, in addition, I'm gonna add to the motion that we move forward with a bid packet. Because that goes along with the blueprints. And his, and the architect's thoughts of he would want to invite to bid to it. But this has gone on for a long, long, long time, and it's, it's time to put it to rest.
I'll second the motion.
Can I ask a question about the motion? How can we, can we put some timeframes on this? Because, I mean, I don't know how long this process takes, but how can we make it as quick as possible?
Well, that's gonna be up to the architect to be able to say how quickly they can turn out a set of architecturally sealed blueprints. The bid packet should be able to be addressed during that same time period. So it, it would depend on the workload of architect, honestly, at this point.
And how would this affect the grant application? Would, would it have any effect? Should we be awarded the grant by the end of the month? Would this have any effect on it?
No, it would have no negative effect.
No negative, so, so if we got a set of sealed plans and we was awarded that grant, there's no ramifications?
No.
Okay.
It's if you award, if you, if you receive a, a grant and you have already awarded a construction contract, then, then your local money will be spent. Whereas here, all you're doing is your due diligence. I assume DPI will have to look at the plans and approve them. But no, the, the only expense that this board will bear is the money we spend with the architectural firm.
And those are typically, aren't they typically now done as a percentage of the project?
Yes.
Yeah. If the project's not awarded, then that's still not a, not an expenditure.
Right. We have a motion by Board Member Schrum, and a second by?
Mr. Lautermeier.
Mr. Lautermeier.
I'd, I'd like to comment. I'm actually very unhappy that we're moving. I feel way too quickly. And some of them have made the comment that this has been going on forever. But I have not been involved in those discussions. And so this is, to me, premature when I haven't had time to sit, look at plans, look at them. It all seems to be stemming out of two things for me. And one, my objection, and it's that it was sitting on here on the agenda without any work session beforehand, that we have not been given these things to look at. We have not been given an opportunity to ask questions. We have not been, actually had the opportunity to open it up and even let the public see what's going on. You're talking about taking money and spending it out of our funds to build gymnasium. I have absolutely no issue with building a gymnasium for the kids, none. I have absolutely no issue with any of the concept of this. I have an issue with the process because the discussion is not being held and you're trying to circumvent it. When I sat there and started doing my own research, I found out that there was a report done by DPI. And I asked for it to see it because I had never read it. And it goes back to twenty seventeen, I believe, when it was done. And our schools were sitting at a problem we thought we might have to consolidate. And everybody got upset. And everybody came in and fussed and did all the stuff, just like what we had with masking, but it predates it. However, the problem hasn't left us. And that's not part of the discussion tonight. You're not hearing it tonight. It's being left out of the discussion. Back then, when that report came out, so I went in and found their graph. And they were recommending that we consolidate a school because we were at eighty percent capacity. And school enrollment in the elementary schools at that time was two thousand four hundred and thirty-six. Currently, the numbers that we were just given on Monday, and I went and pulled them out and I made my own chart, we're at one thousand nine hundred and one kids. So there's a five hundred-plus drop in kids from that time. Our capacity in our schools is at sixty-two percent. But we're having no discussion tonight. Not a single word is being said about the fact that we are at sixty-two percent of capacity in elementary schools. But we're gonna go and rebuild and renovate something with a lot of money spent.
Matt, can I answer that question?
No, I've got one more point.
Okay, then I'll answer that.
You're welcome to answer it. And that's why there should be a discussion and there should be a work session. Because if I'm wrong, I want to be corrected. If I have these doubts, I want to be able to air them in a work session before we're committing money and before we're committing people's expectations to the thing. We have people that are now gonna think it's a done deal. And they're gonna think it's gonna happen. And if we stop the breaks, then everybody's gonna have grief. And this is so premature, it has just infuriated me, ever since I saw this on the agenda on Thursday. The second part is, you did not hear tonight either, what are the other needs of physical things in our schools? What is the rest of the list? What are the other things that we know are coming up that we might need to fix? And where's the priority being given to them? Because when you commit this money, it's a fixed pie. It is a fixed pie, I don't care how you look at it. We get set amount of money from the state and we can't grow it, as far as I know. And we can't go out and have a fundraiser or do some crowdfunding for it. And so when we divide it up and we send this money over there to do that project, we did not do a project at another school. And that might be air and heat. That might be, my understanding is the high school air and heat system is needing to be looked at hard. But that's not a list that we're seeing as we're making. But that's not a list that we're seeing as we're making this decision. It seems to me, and I don't mean that, I am just infuriated with it because it seems to me that they're trying to make sure that we can't shut down a school by just dumping a ton of money into it and fixing it. And that's the way it feels to me, and it feels like the wrong way to run a school system. And that is why I've been all upset for the last couple of days.
Richard, before you answer his question, would y'all mind to go back to the slide for the grant application that was submitted? We have submitted these applications, and this is our second round of submissions. Is that correct? That's correct, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
We had five projects originally submitted last year, and one of those was chosen, the roof replacement at Bethlehem Elementary. And so the four remaining projects were submitted last year also, but they, they continued, they stayed in the pot as far as they're, they're four of the one hundred sixty-plus.
Okay. Of these projects that are listed, that we have applied for, how many of those require sealed engineered drawings approved by North Carolina DPI? Just on that screen. So really, it would behoove us to not only engage four drawings for Sugarloaf, but also our HVAC at the high school, Taylorsville, and West. That way, we're prepared in the event that those grants are funded. So maybe it is premature in the fact that we are not engaging all four components of this grant. And yes, you have to spend money to do your due diligence. So, but I'm gonna stop at that point and recognize Ms. Ryan.
Well, I just wanna speak for myself because I have served on this board for fourteen years. And since I've been on this board, we've talked about Sugarloaf in some form or fashion for fourteen years. We've had work sessions, Matt, I'm sorry if you've not been on this board when we've had them. We've had work sessions, we had people from Sugarloaf come, we talked to people. We've had studies done. We've, we do have a list of projects that are due by year, don't we? That's like, we've seen things that are needs by year. What's that called?
Well, I don't recall the name of it right now, but it's facility upgrades.
Yes.
And it typically runs on like a five-year cycle.
So we've had that and we've seen that. And I'm sure we could pull it up anytime we asked to see it, if there's a question. As far as my thoughts on Sugarloaf, I'm tired of talking. And I was on this board when we talked about closing a school. And trust me, we all heard from every community in our county. And I heard it loud and clear, no community wants their school closed. Financially, I don't know if it's the right decision or not, just to be honest. If you go on numbers and strictly numbers. But when you talk to every community, the school is the center of that community. So trust me, I heard it loud and clear, and for two years, the rest of my two years I've got to serve, I will not vote to look at that option again. I might be outvoted, but I will not, I will not do it. That was horrible, it was awful, we were hated. And so, Matt, we've done it. I'm sorry you weren't on here, and I, trust me, you didn't wanna be. But that's why I feel the way I feel. And I can't go back to looking at closing a school or not giving the kids just because they have less numbers. Do they not deserve a gym? How many years have they had a round, undersized gym for elementary kids? So why should we just not give them something that they can use and need and upgrade their media center? And just because we don't know if we wanna do that? Or we might need some more discussion, and I've had fourteen years of discussion, so I'm sorry, that's where I stand.
I can't go on other people's discussion. I've been on it for over three and a half years, have not had that work session. My point is that you are looking at a declining enrollment, and you're ignoring the problem. It was at eighty percent when the advice came in, and now it's at sixty-two percent. And if you look at the numbers, there's two blips in ninth and tenth grade that are gonna age out in the system. And that's gonna lower us overall as a system by a hundred kids as soon as they roll through. Everybody keeps saying the kids are gonna come, we're gonna get all kinds of development. Every school, I went through it and ran and did the chart. I did it on my own. Every school is down, every school, you could, if you just let numbers, I'm not arguing anything. I'm just arguing why is there no discussion? And you see a train wreck coming and you're just not discussing it? Why do you know that you're at sixty-two percent capacity and you're not having a discussion? Next year will be below sixty, probably. And we're not having a discussion. We keep putting it off and punting it to another group, another person. I'll probably not be on the board. I won't be the one sitting in here having to deal with this. But then you will not have the money, because the money's coming in in the operating side based on student enrollment. Every school you have, there's a fixed cost for having the school in its operations, a principal, staff, and then of course, facilities. That's a fixed cost. And so now you're gonna have to deal with that, and you can't get rid of it? We've had trouble getting staff, we have all this, but why aren't we having discussions? Because out of discussions comes creativity. And without the discussion, you do not get creativity. And right now, we are not in a creative place, and we are just ignoring the problem. And no one has talked about this, no one's ever heard it, that we're at sixty-two percent capacity. When we had the study, we were at eighty? And they were recommending that we do something? I'm just saying, I wanna have the discussion before we go voting on anything. I want us to have the discussion, and I want the public to hear it. That's what I'm arguing.
I feel like the, the train wreck that's fixing to come is, is, is coming from like twenty thirteen when I was on the board and we voted then to, to do this project. And, you know, there's an outline that we had, and various things happened with the declining in the enrollment. Then the study and various things, it was put off. But it's always been, at least when I attended the board meetings before I was back on the board, it's always been a number-one priority, Sugarloaf. That's what this board, when I was not on it, kept saying, I've heard them at a couple of meetings, saying this board, that this was, that Sugarloaf was a top priority. So I think the, I think the train wreck that's coming is each year that we put off, you know, we're, we're debt-free when it comes to this, are we not? I mean, we don't, we don't owe anything, Dr. Haffner?
We don't owe anything currently.
And each time we put this off, each year, I feel like, just my opinion, that we've been put, we bought a box of Band-Aids, and it's the, it's the good sturdy, hefty Band-Aids. And we've been putting the Band-Aids on Sugarloaf and Taylorsville and these other schools. We've been putting, putting Band-Aids on. And I'm afraid our Band-Aids are gonna run out. And we're gonna be, we're gonna have to buy another box of Band-Aids, and it's gonna turn into tourniquets. Because that's where we're at. I feel like each year we wait to do something, to fix something, something else is happening. Something else is getting older, something else is dilapidating. And I just feel, you know, I, Matt, I've been here from the first part of it. So I mean, I respect what, you know, your comments, but I'm ready to move forward and get it done. It's something that has been told we were gonna do for several years. And it's just time to do it, in my opinion. I just, that's how I feel about it, so thank you.
Any other comments, have a motion, have a second, any further discussion? One thing that I will say in respect to all people, all parties, we ride down the Troutman. You go down one fifty, you go to Catawba County. Growth is inevitable, and it's moving in this direction. Residential homes, houses. I mean, look at the building permit numbers. And, you know, with Sugarloaf, we've gone through, we're supposedly at the third phase. You know, we had two years worth of pandemic. Then I think there was a recession somewhere. But it's real easy to talk about consolidation when, if you've been through it, you'll have a new appreciation for community schools. And the last time I checked, the only board member that's on this board, they were talking about closing Taylorsville Elementary School. Well, Ms. Hardison served in where Matt sits now. But I don't care if it's Sugarloaf, Stony Point, Bethlehem, Ellendale. I won't be part and party to any school consolidation, whether I'm here ninety days or whatever. Because the thing about it is, that is a community base. And legally, we can't, school systems can't borrow money. We depend on Alexander County Government to build every, every school's been built. Every gym's been built. Unless lottery monies are used or half-cent sales taxes are used to pay for HVAC and repairs. But I think any veteran of this board who went through that consolidation idea last time, maybe call us jaded, I don't care what you call us. But, but I, I think a majority of this board, whether it's a train wreck or what have you, we'll keep all the schools open till the last lot has to be turned off. And that's really where I think we're at. And I think growth's coming, I know growth is coming. And you and I can do nothing about a recession. We can't do anything about building prices. But folks are still buying homes, and contractors are still pulling permits. And a lot of the growth is going on in Bethlehem, but, you know, I view this as a third phase, because we've been working at Sugarloaf for years, years. And there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. If there's no more discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I'd like to be noted as abstaining because I don't think the vote should have been called.
Okay. It carries with one abstention. This time, I'll entertain a motion to enter into closed session pursuant to the General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen, one one, eight six, and three.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ryan.
Second.
By Mr. Robson. Thank you.